Welcome to the April 22, 2019, meeting of the Board of Selectmen. As per the open-meeting law, is there anybody recording this meeting? Being none, may we stand and salute the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We're going to try to follow the agenda as much as we can. We may move around a little bit here. There were no public comments here tonight. If anybody came in late and would like to, then let us know. Otherwise, we'll get into public hearings, and our first public hearing tonight for 7:00. It's a little late, we apologize. Sheldon's Harley-Davidson at 914 Southbridge Street. License applications, one-day outdoor entertainment license and one-day beer and wine licenses per the event calendar in 2019. You're the representative, so please come up and sit down with us. Can I have a motion to open the hearing, please?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay. Before we get started, I have a three-member board tonight. And what I'd like to do is just propose to you that we have to have all members of the board voting tonight in the affirmative in order for anything to happen. So with that in mind, I'd like to take your first date, and we'll talk about that and possibly vote at that tonight, and then have our meeting on May 13th. Is that our first meeting in May to have come in and speak about the balance of the calendar?
That's fine. I won't be here that day. I'll be out of town, but I was just thinking about that after we talked. Is it okay if somebody else is here to represent? Is that going to make a difference, or?
No, it won't make any difference as long as that information is, you know, they come along with all the information they need to talk about the calendar.
Okay. It's going to be all the same.
Okay. All right. So your first, can you tell us a little bit about what you're planning on doing for your first event?
Yes, so ultimately, it's just our list of bike nights. You know, it's on the 26th. We have a band, we have approved food trucks, beer and wine, no, just beer.
I'm sorry. Before we continue, would you just introduce yourself?
Yeah, yeah. Chad Raymond, I'm the general manager of Sheldon's, yeah.
Thank you, Chad.
One thing we did do this year that we didn't do last year is we were reducing the from six to nine is what it was last year. We're going to do five to eight, okay, this year. And we did two a month last year, and we're only going to do one a month this year for our list of bike nights.
Okay.
Ultimately, we, I think you guys approved us for five vendors last year. There'll be some vendors there as well, you know, patch sewing people, you know, the sew patches on and sell patches and stuff like that. And there might be, I forget what the other one she has, but it's approved with the Town of Auburn.
Okay. And this is going to be your first event? It's going to be on April 26th, so that'll be this Saturday?
Uh, is it this Saturday or Friday? It's Friday.
Friday, okay. This Friday. And it goes from 5 till 8:00?
Correct.
And what's, again, what is the program going to be? It says a bike event, but what did that?
It's just a bike night. It's just designed to get people to the store. You know, we provide live music for them, and we do dollar beers and get a couple of food trucks there, and it's just for people to come and just drive traffic to the dealership.
Okay. I'll turn it over to the board for any numbers to questions.
I do have a couple.
Mr. Carpenter.
So you're calling it Bike Night?
Yep.
You're not going to have any trick riders? You're not going to have any burnouts? You're not going to have anything that's going to cause the neighbors to be upset, correct?
No, no, no. Yeah, we, you know, obviously, there was a prior history with Sheldon's and, you know, we, my goal, I mean, I've only been there a year and a half, but my goal was to get through the 2018 list of events without a hitch, and ultimately, we did that. And, you know, we know what the, what we're able to do and what we're not able to do, and we'll stick between the, the.
The guideline from last year. How long is it going to take you to break down?
So it's typically 30 minutes, roughly, to get all the barricades and stuff that we have, and the cones and the band. It's about 30 minutes. Call it 45 maybe, just to give me an extra 15, you know?
How are you going to control people accessing the site? Is there not going to be any off-street parking, correct? You're not using halogens or anything like that?
We're not using halogens. I mean, ultimately, what the, I think Chief Coleman, you know, we had him come by last year. He gave me a map that would work, kind of the way our parking lot is. So I'm not sure if you guys have a copy of that, but the overflow parking is in the back. So we basically barricade from the back of the building off, and I have typically six people doing traffic. And once we fill the front lot full of bikes, the rear lot is full for cars. So we just rifle, you know, basically, the access traffic back there. I do, however, you know, and we didn't even have to take this opportunity last year, but the guy that owns the building next to us that has the auto body shop there, which is on the same side of the road, so people wouldn't be crossing the street or doing any of that, he has given me, you know, permission to use that if need be. I don't see us, I mean, we had plenty of people there last year where that was never a concern. But yeah, no, we're not using halogens where people are crossing the road and getting themselves in any danger.
How many people do you anticipate coming?
Um, I think on the permit, it was like 150 to 200, and we typically were pretty close to that. We never exceeded that number.
Well, now, I guess what I'll do is I'll follow up along with that. If you've got the bikes coming in, you have a space for them. You're going to have a flow of traffic for cars to come in and park?
Yeah.
So that there's no concerns of safety with people, you know, walking around bikes and stuff out front?
No, so ultimately, the bikes are to the right.
Okay.
Right. And then any access bike flow is to the rear of the building. We typically don't need to utilize that, and then there'll be also vehicles as well. But I mean, I got the traffic, you know, the sign guy, the flaggers basically parking these people, and that way, they know exactly where to.
Terrific. Now, you have met with the DCG, the Development Coordinating Group, and you had a discussion, and I'm just going to go through the requirements. And the applicant shall obtain necessary permits and inspection from town departments, boards, commissions, most notably, the Board of Health. Secondly, the applicant shall go, as you are tonight, before the Board of Selectmen, if they add any additional public events outside the included calendar of events. But I think what we're going to do, as I spoke with you earlier, that we're going to take a look at your Friday night operation, and then we'll, from, on May 13th, we will have a full board, and then we'll be able to discuss the rest of the calendar with you at that point.
Okay.
The applicant shall obtain any necessary permits through the Building Department, such as outdoor tents.
We've already, we have a standard, we have one that comes in for six months. It actually went up today, and we, that's the only one that we.
Okay. The applicant shall use the approved site plan that was reviewed by the Public Safety Committee. So what we have in front of us tonight is the plan that you are.
It's the same one that we drew up last year, yeah.
Okay. And lastly, the applicant shall check with the Police Department to see if the details are required, any details are required for any of the events. So you spoke with the Police Department for details that may be required?
We did last year, and it wasn't required. I mean, I can certainly reach out again and see if that's something that they want me to do.
If you would, please. That would be one of the things that they had talked about and saying if, just to check with them and see if they, you know, explain to them what you're going to be doing and see if they do, you know, suggest a detail to you.
Perfect. Yep.
Close the hearing and make a motion if you're just going to do the one.
Yeah. Okay. Is there any other questions, comments? Have you got anything else for us, Chad?
I do not.
Okay. Can we have a motion to close the hearing?
So moved. Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Okay. So for tonight, with the partial board that we have, we're going to look at the date 4/26 for a, we can cover both the outdoor entertainment, and we'll take them as two separates because we should discuss the.
So what do you want to take first, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Outdoor entertainment?
Yeah, we'll take the outdoor entertainment first.
I'll make a motion that we approve the outdoor entertainment license for April 26th from 5 to 8, that the conditions of the DCG outlined in the memo, which I will double-check the date, April 3rd, 2019, are attached, and that all parking be on Sheldon's property.
Okay. You got that, Sharon?
Second.
Second. Is there any further discussion? Being none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? So now, we have the one dear, one-day beer and wine license also, and I'd like to open up that hearing.
Motion to open the hearing. Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Okay. Would you explain to us, Chad, about the beer and wine license and what you proposed to do?
Yep. So again, identical to last year. We do $3 beers. We bracelet people, and then as the tip-certified girls that we have are serving, they mark the bracelet. You know, we kept it in order pretty good last year, and it was about all we do. There is going, not going to be any wine, though.
Okay.
Yeah, it's just going to be beer.
Just beer, okay. All right. And you have Surf Safe certification, you have tip-certified people that are going to be running that.
Yep.
Is it a, just the area, or is it going to be throughout the property that people are going to be able to have the beer?
Um, you know, typically, it's, we have a fence that we have.
Okay.
Typically, most of the time, everybody stays behind there. I mean, you know, if they mingle in the showroom, then they'll walk around with their beer and whatnot.
Okay. All right. Is there anything else? I also see here that you have a crowd manager that will be on-site, that'll be there for the whole event?
We have two people, yeah.
You have two people there. Terrific. Okay.
To the chair, if I may.
Yes, please.
I just heard from the chief that he wanted to let you know that no detail will be required.
Okay. Great. Over. All right. Thanks, sir. That'll work. Okay. So is there any other questions, comments? Have you got any other comments regarding this?
I'm good.
Motion to close the hearing.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Now, we'll nominate a motion for the one-day beer license.
I'll make a motion that we approve the license provided that all of the applicable requirements of the town, its boards and departments, commissions have been fulfilled. Said license is subject to all conditions stated upon them. Fair to comply with any and all conditions shall invalidate the license and render it null and void, and with the conditions of the DCG to be placed upon it, and an additional requirement that all alcohol consumption be restricted to where the beer tent is, just to make sure that we have a good control on who might get it.
Okay. Go ahead, sit there, Sharon. Okay. Is there a second?
A second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Being none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Good luck with your event.
Okay. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Next, we have, let's see. I'd like, yeah, I'd like to move up, let's see. Item 6B.
So moved. A second, I'm sorry.
No problem. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So item 6B is the proposed solid waste fees that we are proposing for FY '20, and I'd like to ask, I'd like to foil the Public Health Director and our Director of Development and Inspection Services to come up, and I'm not sure if Sheldon possibly wants to recognize the solid waste committee members that are with her and invite them up as well. And while they're coming up here, just to let you know, we're giving this to you this evening for informational purposes and to be able to answer any questions. We don't expect you to take a vote on it this evening. We would like to have that vote at the next meeting on May 13th, but recognizing there were only three members of the board this evening, we didn't want to have you feel that you needed to do that without a full compliment.
Great. Thank you.
So I'm going to turn it over to Darlene to explain why we're here, and then the committee.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I wanted to just thank our solid waste advisory committee members, Virginia Marshant, our chair, and Mike Blair, our newest member. They have done a great job helping to figure out how we move forward. It's, we have, solid waste fees for trash have not been changed in nearly six years. So the last time that we, we had to make a change was back in 2013 in May. Over the past about a year and a half, there's been a lot of changes in the solid waste and recycling world. About a year and a half or so ago, China, which typically accepted all of our recyclable materials, started putting on some restrictions. And those restrictions really kind of changed the landscape over the past year and a half, almost two years now. Those restrictions, in general terms, they used to accept all type of materials from single stream and materials that we were exporting, and now, there's very strict, very strict requirements on the materials that they can accept. And contamination in recycling is a very big and, very big topic, and something that we have spent a lot of time over the past year, kind of trying to bring awareness to. So as you can kind of recall, we used to separate recyclable material, we used to have the buckets, we used to separate cans, bottles, and paper. And single stream came about many years ago to try to make it easier for people to recycle. And with that, also came some challenges with everything going into one container. So if it goes into one container and it's, the containers or bottles, cans aren't rinsed or cleaned properly, it can contaminate, the food material can contaminate everything that's in the load. So we were fortunate to get a grant, as you may recall, for somebody to do education, and that's what happened over the past year and a half. We were fortunate to have that position. Taking a look at what the cost and the elevated cost are coming to us now for what's happening in the recycling world, we need to take a look at what the solid waste fees are. So the committee has looked at other towns and our costs and what is happening with what the fees are covering, and we needed to take a look at doing a possible increase. So what is before you tonight is a listing of the existing and proposed fees. Those are listed through the different, different choices. So there are different choices, single-family small toter, single-family large toter, and then you have the multis. Those all comprise all of the solid waste program users, and what you have before you are the proposed increases. I know there's a lot of information, and I'm happy to take questions, and I know the chair is happy to answer any questions that you may have as well.
And, Mr. Chairman, if I may.
Yes, please.
Also, thank you, Darlene, and I really want to thank the committee that put a lot of work into this. It's never easy to make a consideration to raise fees, but it's also critical that we look at this because we can't have taxpayers who are not utilizing the program subsidize those users of the program. So the fees, that is what a fee is. It is to cover the cost to the user of that specific program or service. So this would be, right now, if we don't have an increase in fees, there are increased costs to the town. There are going to be increased costs beyond even what we have now, and we don't want to pass that along to all the taxpayers who are not necessarily the users. This way, you're streamlining it just toward the users, so.
Okay. I do have a question. I don't know how to address it to, but I guess what I'm going to do is, as the town manager just suggested, that the rates are going to go up at some point because of restrictions, regulations of, you know, your recyclables versus your trash. Do you foresee anything in the near future where these rates are going to be going up again due to contract, due to, you know, any more restrictions or regulations, requirements for, you know, how we handle it?
So the, we are in a contract. We have a contract that extends through the end of next year. So we do have the contract price. However, we have seen in other towns, municipalities that have been in contracts, they have had discussions about the trash companies coming to the town because of costs that they're incurring, because of processing costs that have risen. So I would like to tell you that, you know, nobody wants to talk about increased fees, and I wish that I could give you a more stable answer. However, I do want to be honest with the committee. It's something that the solid waste committee has looked at, and even discussions to try to figure out how this can, we can make it easier for residents going forward. So not that anybody wants an increased cost, but for almost six years, we haven't had any increases, which was a good thing. But I think it's probably the responsible approach in looking at the committee's discussions to take a look at it at least yearly to see, hey, how are we doing? You know, are we, are we doing okay? What's happening globally? Is there any chance that the trash companies may approach the town for any charges that they're incurring that maybe were different from when their contract started? So that's, that's a real discussion.
So basically, the cost of doing business?
It is.
You go along, and then you'll see how that works as the time goes on.
And certainly, I think the committee wants to stay ahead of it, and we have been fortunate with not, not having to raise the fees in the past six years, but I think what's happening, we need to just keep a close eye on it.
Great. Thank you.
Sure.
I'd like to affirm everything that Darlene said, and also add that I believe for the past year or so, the program always incurs indirect costs as well as the direct costs of the hauling contract and the disposal contract we have with two different vendors. We also have indirect costs incurred by the Assessor's Office and the Town Treasurer's Office. And those indirect costs, coupled with the other two costs, have created a deficit that we're trying to bridge with this increase. And just when Darlene says stay ahead, what she means is pretty much stay level with meeting, meeting the costs and having the fees balance out.
Okay. Anything else? Yes? Mr. Little Liberty.
I don't have a question. I just have a comment. I just wanted to say thank you to the solid waste committee and to you for all the work that you put in to lower the solid waste that we have put out there and to solve the problems that have come up. And I know we're not voting on this tonight, but I appreciate the work that you put into it.
Thank you.
I know that I've had several people approach me on costs over the years with, you know, the waste is going to be more expensive to collect than to, you know, just to process. And I, you know, it's just, this is the type of thing we need to hear, is see where we're going with it, and it's not all within our control. It's outside, and you are keeping an eye on it as best you can, so. And I will just echo Tristan, that thank you very much for all you do. We appreciate that. And with this now, I guess, we're going to present this to us, the board, at our next meeting?
To the chair, that's correct. We would like to have a vote at the May 13th meeting, so we'll make sure that this is on your agenda again next time for a vote. We'll make sure that information is provided to the two members who are unable to be here tonight, and in all of your packets, once again.
And hopefully, those that are watching tonight will, you know, if they have any questions, please call the town hall and see if we can't answer some questions. And I guess, would you give us a number for your office, or if anybody does have any questions? Please.
Yep. The Department of Development and Inspection Services is 508-832-7703, and my name is Darlene Coyle. I'm the director.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else? Great. Thank you all for coming in tonight. Appreciate that.
You're very welcome.
Okay. Let's see. I guess we can go back to the agenda. Got some communications, letters from the town planner on the planning board, public hearings on the zoning bylaws, on the annual town meeting warrant for the Drury Square Village District, and tiny homes bylaws.
Through the chair, these items are just informational. The town planner, Adam Menard, wanted to make sure that you were aware of the votes that the planning board recently took on the two bylaws that are proposed on the town warrant for the, for the May 7th meeting. And they did vote four to zero to recommend the draft zoning bylaw on the Drury Square Village District, and they also voted five-zero to support and recommend the draft bylaw for the tiny homes.
Okay. And those will be presented at the town meeting in?
That's correct.
Two weeks?
Yes, two weeks from tomorrow.
Thank you. Okay. Other, our selectmen general items, we have a seasonal open-air license on town property. There's nobody here from the Scouts to bring this to us, and their event is going to be on Saturday this week, April 27th. I have that, and I also have, yeah, just for April 27th. So I'm going to put that on hold for now, table that until we see if anybody does come in. Okay. The next thing we have is a seasonal open-air license on town property again by Troop 101, and that's for May 25th, set up on the 24th of May this year. Doesn't appear that anybody's from the Scouts are here tonight, so we will put that on hold until such time that we come to meeting close. All right. Then we have discussion on a letter from the chairman of the Library Board of Trustees on vacancy due to a trustee resignation. Can I turn that over to Julie?
Certainly, through the chair. This is a letter that was sent to the chair of the Board of Selectmen from the chair of the Board of Trustees of the library, Matt Tonk, and this is done according to Mass General Law, Chapter 41, Section 11, that governs the process that needs to be followed whenever there's a vacancy on an elected board. And the Board of Trustees is an elected board. As you can see from the letter, Ms. Ellen Ganley submitted her letter of resignation effective March 25th to the town clerk. Her term, she was in an appointed position, so it would expire this, it would, excuse me, expire May 18th of 2021. She was appointed and then elected, if you recall. So you appointed her, then a couple months later, she ran for the office and was elected. So because it's an elected term, under the law, the board jointly with the Board of Trustees, the Board of Selectmen, need to vote to appoint someone to fill the position until the next election. So the resignation came in too late for it to go on the ballot for this May. It was maybe a month after that deadline had passed. So therefore, an appointment would have to.
So therefore, an appointment would have to be made that would be valid until next May of 2020, when the, when the seat would go on a town ballot. So last year, the board voted that the process you wanted to follow, because it wasn't opening last year, and the board last year voted to have the Library Board of Trustees interview any and all applicants for the vacancy and bring their recommended candidate to the Board of Selectmen. Then we worked with you and them to find a date that was mutually agreeable. You held a joint meeting, and then the boards jointly took a roll call vote and voted.
I'm still in support of that. I think that it's, if the library has a, you know, get the trustees down there, I don't know enough about their, their job in order to be able to interview them properly. So if, my idea would be, as we had done before, and per the vote, is to have the trustees and Matt, the chairman, to interview those and then bring them to us with their recommendation. Mr. Carpenter.
Well, I don't think it would be fair to change the process with two members being absent, but I would suggest that there is a better way of doing it, and I was hoping we might consider that, that individual board members could submit questions to the manager to share with the library trustees the process that they typically follow, as they take, I think, our standard three, and then they have their own, meaning the library trustees. But I, for one, would like to be more of a participant in the process. I'm not in agreement with the vote that we took last year, but I, again, don't feel that with two members absent, we should be making changes that, I mean, we shouldn't be jerking the library trustees around. One year, we do it this way; one year, we do it that way. So my motion would be to follow the process, but to add the opportunity for board members to submit questions to the manager for inclusion in any interview process, and that the library trustees notify this board when the interviews are going to be slated, held, so that if we so choose to attend and follow the process along with them in the audience, we can do so.
Okay. That's a motion. And Sharon, there was quite a bit to it, so I want to be sure that you have it. Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Is there any further discussion? Okay, I only have one question. I guess, we, we did vote to have the trustees do the interviews and come up with their recommendations, but I think that if we get involved with going down there and, well, basically, I think what you're suggesting, Mr. Carpenter, is that you go down, or any members go down from this board and ask questions. Okay, if that be the case, and?
It would be in writing, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
Only in writing. And we, if we were to attend, if people wanted to, it's entirely up to members. I did last year, and I found it to be very helpful to sit through the process. Clearly, that's up to individuals, but I do think that this is the only board that we allow someone to tell us who we're going to appoint. And I don't think, and I've said this before, it's nothing new, I don't think this board should be deferring to any other board when, this is not a transparent board. They're not on TV. People cannot easily get there. They cannot easily watch these meetings, like most of the meetings that we have up here. So I would feel more comfortable if they were on TV. That's not my call, but the process is very closed. They meet once a month, you know, on a revolving basis. It's not necessarily a fixed time, so people don't really know what the library trustees are doing. And I'm not suggesting that they're doing anything inappropriate, but I do think that this board does have a role under Mass General Law to vet candidates, not just to accept another board's decision. I would not expect, I don't know that much about the school committee, but we always interview together. And for uniformity, we should treat every board the same way. We voted differently, so that's fine. But I do think that this is at least a way for some of us who do have a desire to participate a little more fully, to ask our questions, get our questions, because when we attend, we can't ask questions. There is no vehicle through the library trustees for members in the audience to ask questions. You can only sit there and listen to the questions that they ask. So it seems to me an easy enough fix. And again, members can choose to submit questions, or they can choose not to, but I think it's a fair compromise, let's put it that way.
Okay. Anything else? Ms. Shepherd, any comments, suggestions?
The one thing I would add is that we did advertise the vacancy as soon as we found out. We initially had the deadline this coming Friday, and as of this afternoon, we extended that two weeks. The Board of Trustees chair requested that we give it another couple weeks. We had one applicant that just came in, and we're hoping, you know, the longer you put it out there, there may be more interest. So we felt it was important to open it up and try to encourage more applicants. So the new deadline, for those who are interested, is May 10, which is Friday, and we would need to have any application resumes or letter of interest for serving into our office by May 10.
Okay. And then from that point on, any idea what the timeframe would be for interviews after that?
I do not. I would have to talk to the chair and find out what the intent is, but presumably, the applications would be in by the 10th, so the board would then have to post and advertise and make sure that the candidates are available for a meeting. So it's really going to be up to the board to organize those, those interviews and make sure that the candidates are able to attend the night that they scheduled. And then when we have a date, I'll share it with you.
All right. The reason I ask is with, depend upon the vote of the board here tonight, with the interviews, want to be sure that the questions are put in soon enough where the trustees can determine what they want to ask, what they don't want to ask, and if there's enough time to do that, so that, you know, the, the candidates can be prepared to answer any and all questions that come before them.
So given that, if this, if the vote passes as, as presented, where you're going to give the opportunity to submit questions, I would recommend that you have them to me by May 10, which is the date that the application process closes. And that way, they'll get the applications along with the questions at the same time.
Okay. Is there any further comment? Okay. Motion's been made, and you have the motion there, Sharon, and that's for questions to be submitted to the town manager for inclusion to the interviews for the trustees of the library for the new, for the vacant spot. Is there any other comments, questions? Being none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Okay. We have gift acceptances in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 53A, and from the fire rescue, for the fire rescue department, from James Buckley for $50.
Motion to accept with gratitude?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay. Now, under proclamations and recognitions, we have a request from a town resident for a proclamation for Children's Mental Health Week in May 2019. Now, I know we've just come through a process for determining proclamations, recognition letters, and what have you, and you'll have that in your package tonight. The first one we'll take, it's a request from a town resident for a proclamation for Children's Mental Health Week in May 2019. I took a look at this, and I don't believe that's within the guidelines for proclamations. I think we could send a letter of recognition for the Children's Mental Health Week in May 2019. It extends beyond the town, so it's a, not something that, as an individual, by unique or significant events, such as one-time major accomplishments, but if we send a letter of recognition, I think that will cover us, and I think that will be covered under our policy.
I make a motion that we send a letter of recognition to, in honor of the Children's Mental Health Week, care of Kristen Solares, at the address provided.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Okay. Let's see. And the second one is a request for an Eagle Scout proclamation from Troop 53. And you have a letter here from Brian, and that's as far as I'll go with it, because I, Dozneski, he's the assistant scout master for the group, and the letter is in behalf of Zach Lazaric. He's 18, and he's got his Eagle rank in the Boy Scouts of America, and this is from the Faith Baptist Church, and this would fall within the guidelines of our policies. Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we issue a proclamation to the Eagle Scout, Zach Lazaric.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Let's see. Now we have under item F, a request to change the name of owner on flammable storage above ground permit at 746 Southbridge Street. And we have a letter here from our town clerk requesting and making it known that the new information for the gas registration at 746 is listed. And is there any comments, questions?
I'd make a motion that we approve the name change outlined in the memo from the town clerk dated April 5.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Being none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Now, under the town manager items, we have 6A, the town ride cleanup day on Saturday, May 4.
Through the chair, at the last meeting, Darlene Coyle was here that evening and did let you know that it was going to be on May 4. I just wanted to make sure that we had the flyer in your packet for this week's agenda. This flyer is being posted and advertised on all the usual spots, our website, social media, ACTV, throughout town hall and public buildings. So just wanted to let everybody know again that the town line cleanup is Saturday, May 4. Registration starts at 7:30 to 8:00 at the fire station. From 8:00 to 10:30 is actually the cleanup, and then from 10:45 to 11:45 is a complimentary lunch provided by Opec Steakhouse. And we just want to thank all the different sponsors who were involved in this. This is really important. It's a really great community effort. Republic Bank Hometown, Central Mass Mosquito Control, Interstate All Battery Center, and Mastermans, all great, and obviously, Outback, all great community supporters and members of our business community as well. So we just want to acknowledge them, and hopefully, people will turn out to help.
Okay. And there is a link that you can fill out and return to the chamber by Friday, April 26, or send an email in your interest in volunteering. That'll be at info@auburnchamberma.org. And as always, if you don't make it to email or to the town link, then they welcome volunteers to just come in, and we will take care of you. Thank you. Next, we have the town participation in the 39th Annual Building Safety Month.
Through the chair, there is an, an item in your packet, just explaining what this is. It is actually, it's a nationwide campaign to acknowledge building safety and making sure that people are prepared for keeping their buildings up to code and making sure that all public safety measures are taken in our, in our buildings. Our building commissioner wanted to participate in this, felt it was really a worthwhile opportunity to educate the public. Again, this goes without reach and information, just keeping the community informed on all different ways to stay, to stay safe while in your home and while in businesses. So it is a month-long worldwide event, and there are a number of different things that will be taking place, and we have a number of different departments in the town that will be participating as well.
Okay. And will this be posted on the social media for the town, so that people are aware of what's going on? Okay. Thank you. We have no tabled items. We have no Board of Selectmen member items, and Julie, have you got anything else for tonight?
I do not, thank you.
Okay. Has any of the board members got anything for tonight?
Excuse me, Ms. Chair, I think the one thing, we just want to go back to the Boy Scouts. I know no one has?
Oh, I'm sorry. That's, that's correct.
But that event is this Saturday, the first one is this Saturday. You may want to hold on the event for the 25th if you want, but you might want to have a discussion about the event that's scheduled for Saturday.
Thank you.
They were aware of this?
Yeah, we always do.
They've been, they were notified.
Okay. So we'll go back to under the item 5A, seasonal open air license on town property as Boy Scout Troop 101 from the First Congregational Church. It's a bottle and can drive at the Auburn Fire Station, 47 Auburn Street, and that'll be on this Saturday. We have that piece of paper in front of us. It's going to go April 27 from 9:00 AM to 1:00 PM. The application has been filled out in total. It appears to be completed. I have a letter here from Fire Chief Stephen Coleman regarding the request of the Boy Scouts to utilize the fire station property for their annual bottle and can drive. I would suggest that they, I would request that they set up in the municipal lot adjacent to the station across from Savers Bank. This will give them room for traffic coming in and out of the lot and will be out of the way of moving emergency vehicles. And I believe that's been an understood issue right along, so I don't see any problem. They have a liability waiver here, and everything appears to be in order.
Right, through the chair, everything is in order, and this event, as well as the next item, are both annual events. They do hold them every year.
Yeah, and we've never had any complaints through any one of them, so I will leave it to the board to decide what they prefer to do.
I'll make a motion that we approve the license application as provided. Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Being none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. And we'll take a look at the one for May 25, and that goes from 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM, and that goes?
Sorry, through the chair, yeah, before you go to this, if you want to take the second part of it, which will be the fee waiver.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. Thank you. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we waive the fee.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. And now we'll go to the next one. This Boy Scouts Troop 101 from the First Congregational, and that's going to be May 25 from 7:00 to 3:00. And they'll be setting up the night before and cleaning till 6:00 PM on the 25th. And this is going to be, I believe, at the library. Yes, the Auburn Public Library on May 25, and set up on May 24. The application appears to be completed. They have a liability waiver, and yes, they do have the permission. We will close, be closed on that day, and I did send the, sign and send the paperwork through the process via the Boy Scouts representative. And that comes from the director of the library, Jean Collins, on April 12. What's the pleasure of the board?
I make a motion we approve the license application as provided. Second.
Any further discussion? Being none, all those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. And is there a?
I'll make a motion we waive the license. Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you. Now, let's see. We, are there any other comments? Anything by board members here for tonight?
No, thank you.
Okay. All right, we have minutes from?
We didn't have minutes.
We didn't have any minutes. We didn't have any minutes. I thought I saw them in here, but I guess we didn't. So I guess if there's nothing else, then I will entertain a motion.
Motion to?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Thank you, and good night.